Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of the council in the council chamber of Hampshire County Council at Castle Hill Winchester. The first item of business this evening is the minutes of the previous meetings of the council. Members, the minutes of the ordinary meeting of council held on the 6th of November 2024 are set out on pages five to fourteen of your agenda pack. Are these all agreed as a correct record? Right, thank you. The next item is disclosure of interests. Are there any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business before us this evening?
Mr Mayor, I need to declare that I have a disclosable pecuniary interest in respect of the council plan and probably local government reorganisation on the agenda due to my additional role as a Hampshire County councillor. However, as there is no material conflict of interest regarding these items, I have dispensation granted by the Ordinance and Governance Committee that enables me to speak and vote on these matters.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. I too need to declare I have a disposable or peculiar interest in respect of items five, six, seven and potentially eight on the agenda due to my additional role as a Hampshire County councillor. However, as there's no material conflict of interest regarding these, I have a dispensation granted by Orders and Governance Committee that enables me to speak and vote on these matters.
Councillor Williams.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I need to declare that I have a disclosable pecuniary interest in respect to the items on the agenda before us today and due to my additional role as Hampshire County councillor. However, as there is no material conflict of interest regarding these items, I have a dispensation granted by the Ordinance and Governance Committee that enables me to speak and vote on these matters.
Councillor Wallace, please.
I'd like to make the same declaration, please.
Admirable brevity. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is announcements. First of all, I'd like to pay tribute to former councillor and mayor of Winchester Pamela Peskit, who passed away on the 21st of November. Pamela was first elected to Winchester City Council in May 1986 to represent the St Barfolume Ward. She served on several committees until her retirement in 1998 and she was the 791st Mayor of Winchester in the year of 1990 to 91. In a message from her family, Pamela has requested there should be no funeral but that her long and varied life would be marked at a memorial event in the spring. My secretary will advise on further details regarding this when they're known. I'm aware that being mayor of Winchester had made both her and her family very proud. Her last outing was to the remembrance service at the cathedral just a few weeks before she died. Please, can I ask that the council stand in silence for a minute in tribute to her passing? Thank you. My mayoral year continues to be busy following a short break over the festive period. One of my first events of 2025 was attending the installation of the Right Reverend Riannan King, the new Bishop of Southampton at Winchester Cathedral on the 11th of January. A very memorable event. I might draw your attention to the fact that my charities are holding two events. The first is at Abbey House on the 19th of February and is a cheese tasting event, first time one's been had. And also there's going to be the Eggheads Quiz on the 28th of February. The details are all on the mayor's charity website. And can I also remind people now that we've had the launch of the annual Mayor of Winchester's Community Awards. The awards recognise and celebrate the organisations and individuals who volunteer and provide such outstanding service to residents of the Winchester district. And the closing dates for nominations are the 16th of February and please contact my secretary should you wish to discuss your nomination or any aspect of the awards. And the award ceremony themselves will take place on the 13th of March at 7pm. I would also like to mention that several local residents have been mentioned in the King's New Year honours and I have written to the following recipients. James Murray and Sarah Parish of Allsford, founders of the Murray Parish Trust and patrons of the Friends of the PICU at Southampton Children's Hospital. Both have been awarded an MBE in recognition of the services to children with illnesses and their families. David Bond of Winchester has been awarded a CBE for services to the defence supply chain. Gillian Reid of Southampton, who is a chemistry professor living in Winchester, has been given a CBE for services to the chemical sciences and to inclusion and diversity. Roderick Brandsgov of Winchester, a former chair of the Hampshire Cricket Club, has been awarded an MBE for services to sport. Keith Wetherley of Shawford, co-founder and director of Tennis First, an MBE in recognition of services to young people. And Alexander James Morris of Meeunstoke, a BEM for services to the community in Meeunstoke and Corhampton. And finally, Kenneth Galton of Southwark has been awarded a BEM for services to Hazel Coppicing and to heritage crafts. So my heartiest congratulations to them all. And now, if I might, Mr Macebearer, if you would like to take the mace away. And thank you very much. Now, Leader, do you have any announcements?
I had noted some down, Mr Mayor, but given quite how much I feature on this agenda later on, I suggest I hold until Cabinet next week. Although I would have been talking about the devolution and local government reorganisation proposals and that comes later in the agenda, so I'll save my comments till then.
Right, thank you. Chief Executive, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, members. I have apologies this evening for the meeting and they have been received from councillors Cunningham, Langford Smith, Westwood and Warwick. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, the next agenda item is item four, questions from members of the public. However, there have been no questions submitted for this evening's meeting, so we can pass swiftly on. The next item is agenda five, consideration and determination of the recommended minute of cabinet held on the 11th of December 2024. Mr John, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Agenda item five is the recommended minute of cabinet held on the 11th of December 2024 regarding the council plan 2025 to 2030. And this is set out on your agenda and in the draft minute of cabinet on page 15. Report CAB3480 refers and this is also included in your agenda pack on pages 17 to 41. Mr Mayor, please note that at the meeting of cabinet it was agreed that authority be delegated to the leader in consultation with the chief executive to make any necessary minor amendments and typographical corrections to the plan prior to consideration at council. Accordingly, a revised track changed version of the council plan 2025 to 2030 is included in appendix one to report CAB3480 and this is in your agenda pack on pages 27 to 33. To conclude, councillor recommended to adopt the council plan 2025 to 2030 with effect from the 1st of April 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr John. Could I have a proposer for the recommended minute of the cabinet, please? Councillor Todd. Do I have a seconder?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. And Kelsey, would you like to reserve your right to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will reserve my right to speak.
Right, okay. Councillor Todd, would you like to introduce, please?
I would indeed. Thank you very much indeed, Mr Mayor. And first of all, Mr Mayor, I would like to start with a thank you. As the cabinet paper lays out, this paper comes with the input of the scrutiny committee, the policy committees, input from parishes, it reflects the input of the resident survey and from the meetings I held with each of the political groups before Christmas and that I offered to our sole independent councillor who did receive also a copy of the document in advance. The typographical corrections referred to are those that were raised at cabinet and there were other points raised as well and thank you for those. And I hope everybody who took part and provided input to the plan can see the impact that it has had on what is in front of you today. And it is quite consciously an evolution and not a revolution. It builds on a strong plan that has seen us cut our directly controlled carbon by 96%, improve our air quality, build and buy hundreds of new council homes, cut phosphates and nitrates going into our rivers, give us a new cultural strategy, put us in the top 20% of authorities providing EV charging, successfully finish and launch our new leisure centre, deliver new pitches and pavilions, submit an ambitious local plan for inspection and all the while maintaining strong finances and keeping council tax down. Back in 2019, this administration made big promises to the electorate and we've worked really hard to keep them. But we continue to face new challenges and we still have a lot to do. Cutting carbon remains absolutely essential. But it's become clearer in the last five years that we also face a nature crisis. And we're also seeing the consequences of the climate crisis with increased flooding, heating and other extreme weather events. We also need to make sure that every part of our district thrives. Our council survey shows that we are delivering consistently right across the district. But as an example, parishes told us that some parts of our district face pressures from neighbouring developments. We are seeing big changes in county employment, for example, particularly affecting Winchester and we don't know what further impact there may be from local government reorganisation. We see the pressure of increased internet shopping which continues to put our high streets under pressure. One of the areas where we didn't make as much progress as we wanted in the last plan is in tackling health inequalities. The most recent life expectancy figures show a seven-year gap in healthy life expectancy between Stanmore and full flood within one city. Too many people are still struggling with the cost of living. And although I'm proud of the new GP surgery that's on the point of opening on one of our former car parks, we're still not where we want to be with health facilities across the district. And when recent news reports were saying that Winchester house prices are growing faster than anywhere else in the country, we still have a lot to do on affordable housing. We also cannot stand still in improving what it costs to heat our homes. We also cannot stand still in improving what it costs to heat our homes. We face a rapidly changing national environment as well, a changing local plan or NPPF, potential changes to our financial settlement and potential reorganisation. And the plan has consciously been written so that we are able to respond to all of these. Now, as we will discuss later, it is possible, the government has expressed an intent, that we may be merged into other councils during the life of this plan. But while the government has ambitious objectives for reorganisation, it's still a very long way politically between today and 2028, which is the date they've suggested for that merger to take place. So I still think it's right to set out a vision for a longer period, to say what we want to do in the Winchester district, what the people and the representatives of the Winchester district believe is right for our district. Ultimately, we haven't written this plan for the government, we've written it for our district, for the residents of our district, for the places, the businesses, the countryside, the villages, the market towns and the city of our district, to set out what we believe to be right for our area. And as I've said at the beginning, more important than any response to the government, it reflects the lessons learned from our residents, from councillors, from parishes and from our discussions informing the plan. And importantly as well, from the promises that this administration made to the electorate back in May. So it lays out four main outcomes that we're aiming for. Going greener faster, ensuring that we have thriving places across the district, ensuring we have healthy communities and ensuring we have good homes for all. And we intend to do it in a way that's efficient and effective and where we're listening and learning. And what in the end is the outcome that we're aiming for with all of this? Our goal is that we will still be the best place to live in the UK, whatever comes at us. But that we will have cut carbon, started restoring the nature that's such a vital part of our district, worked to ensure that every part of our district is thriving, made a real difference to the areas facing the biggest health challenges and delivered a big further increase in affordable housing. And will have done so efficiently, effectively and working closely alongside our residents, our businesses and charities. We do face challenging times ahead, but I hope you will support the plan in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Martin. Martin, Councillor Todd, sorry. Right, are there any questions, please? Councillor Lee, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Leader for the opportunity to contribute to the Council Plan. And fundamentally, there's nothing wrong with the Council Plan as it is. And of course, it would be wise to endorse the plan to ensure continuity of business, provide clear guidance for our priorities and the vision, and to demonstrate certainly the commitment of all of that. However, I did wonder, there is a school of thought that might suggest that in view of the changes that you've indicated, that perhaps in view of the devolution and the local government reorganisation in the future, that we might wish to make some small amendments to signpost that inevitability, just to highlight the direction of travel, which I think is a given, it's just a question of detail, which of course will come in due course. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Councillor Lee, and thank you for asking that question. I've been around the Houses often enough to see that governments can announce initiatives, absolutely confident that they're definitely going to happen. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it will be carried all the way through. I think it's very possible that, for example, the ministry finds that the workload of what they've taken on is such that they may not be able to proceed at the pace that they expect. As an example, as part of the work on local government reorganisation, I had a meeting with a couple of other cathedral cities elsewhere in the country to understand if there were any common issues that we could be working on together. And what became clear was that, for example, one of the things that we have done, which is, or we are part of, which is, for example, the coherent agreement of a combined authority area for Hampshire and the Solent, is absolutely not what has been happening in other parts of the country. So as an immediate example, even though the government has set an ambitious timetable for putting in place combined authorities across the whole of the UK, I know for a fact that, for example, just from news reports and from reading papers that have been put forward, that there is no coherent plan being put forward for the Thames Valley area, that there's no coherent and agreed plan for the West Country, that even as we speak, Bournemouth Christchurch and Pool Council is meeting to decide which way they might want to go, whether they would want to be part of a Hampshire-Solent combined authority or part of the so-called Heart of Wessex Authority that's been mentioned. And I would just mention in passing that I've said to the Leader of Somerset Council that we are, of course, very happy that they can call themselves the Heart of Wessex as long as they're clear about the reporting line. So even on the subject of combined authorities, I think we may see that there is more complexity than people expect. And similarly, when it comes to unitarisation, and we'll discuss this in greater detail later on, it is a very complex picture. So that's why I think it's right not to launch into a huge rework on the basis that 2028 is a definite fixed date that will definitely happen. But to have a plan which does, as I hope has been made clear, talk about what we need to do as an authority to engage with whatever the process might be, whatever the timing might be. I mean, the government is clear that they want unitarisation, they want to get rid of two-tier. But I don't think we necessarily have to assume that it's, or rather, we need a plan that can cope with the fact that it is not certain or guaranteed or definite that it may happen on the timing that they expect.
Thank you. Councillor Brook, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you, Leader, for your introduction to the Council Plan. I wanted to ask really regarding affordable housing, so there was a focus on affordable housing in the previous plan, Council Plan, and yet you're stood here this evening saying we've got the fastest growing house prices. So to restate a question that was so rudely ignored at the previous council meeting, how can we address the affordability of housing in Winchester to prevent the number of people going into temporary accommodation as part of the plan, bearing in mind that was part of the last plan and yet here we are, growing faster than ever?
Thank you very much indeed. And the first thing I would say is I would distinguish between the market rental price of housing in Winchester and the impact on temporary accommodation. There are definitely issues associated with temporary accommodation. But as an example, despite having some of the highest house prices or increasing house prices in the country, we're doing much better than other areas that actually have very low house prices. So the linkage between house pricing and temporary accommodation isn't absolute. It's often, for example, seaside towns with very, very low rental values that are seeing the biggest issue with temporary accommodation. But I agree with you that the issue of the affordability of housing is an important one. One of the main things that we can do is to put in place robust planning policies. That's why we've put in place an absolute, you know, within our local plan, a requirement to deliver firstly the housing that was laid out in the previous NPPF, an increased supply, and secondly, to ensure that an adequate proportion of that housing is made available in affordable form. We're not in a position to change market pricing, but we are in a position to increase the amount of affordable housing, sub-market housing that's available in our district. And through the combination of our local plan, and actually there may even be opportunities with the devolution deal where supposedly a new Mayor of Hampshire-Solent will have access to affordable housing funding and a role in allocating the money that's currently allocated by Homes England, for us to be able to put in place sub-market housing, such as the council housing that we've been driving forward with and continue to drive forward with, that at least can help address some of the pressures that we are seeing on temporary accommodation.
Councillor Horrell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and Happy New Year to everyone. If I may, Mr Mayor, it's a point of detail. Much has been made of the resident survey that was conducted to inform the Council Plan. And at the Cabinet meeting, I asked a question about the availability of that document to all of us, all councillors, so that we can see the detail of what our residents have said. We have seen some highlights, and I was advised by the Leader that it would be made available for this meeting so that all of us could be well informed and have that information. And I've sought that document from officers but have failed to see that document before this evening. I'd be grateful if the Leader would explain why, given its importance for the decision this evening, it hasn't been made available to all of us. Thank you.
Councillor Todd, please.
Yes, I mean, thank you, Councillor Horrell, for that question. As you know, we held a member briefing where we took people through the key points and the key insights that we've derived from the resident survey and the ones that have been used to shape the plan that you have in front of you today. There were some questions in that meeting that weren't able to be answered and actually weren't fully covered within the report that had been done on the Council Plan, and so I did ask that those be done. As an example, I thought it would be helpful to have a urban rural split in aggregate. I have received a draft of those. I haven't, I still think there are some questions that need to be answered about it, but I've not seen anything in there that would lead me to come back to you and say what we have in front of us today is incorrect. I will ensure that it is made available on the earliest possible timing, but I can assure you that there is absolutely nothing in there, and certainly nothing that goes beyond what was in the member briefing where you had a chance to ask whatever questions you wanted about that survey, that I believe would lead to substantive change to the plan that we have in front of us today.
Thank you, Councillor Todd. Sorry. Councillor Cooper, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I very much welcome this plan, and amongst other things, it's really positive to see the strongest possible focus that is on tackling the climate emergency and building new homes, with going greener faster being the central pillar in the helpful diagram in our papers. I'm very grateful to the Leader of the Council for his openness and effectiveness in engaging with various stakeholders to this plan, including all the councillors here. And as set out in Priority Six, this is a perfect example straight away of listening and learning. I'm particularly pleased about the ongoing commitment set out in the Healthy Communities priority to support the City of Sanctuary movement and to support refugees in our district. I know the Leader, the Cabinet and in fact all councillors here are very supportive of this aim, and it is profoundly encouraging thought that everyone is so universally behind it, given there are attempts in this country for certain forces to toxify the issue of people seeking sanctuary. Our council has been a shining example of best practice for our response to supporting refugees fleeing war in Ukraine, for example. Our council's Ukraine resettlement team across housing in the communities was shortlisted for UK local government awards, following its effectiveness at housing hundreds of Ukrainian refugees and its innovation in the establishment of the Winchester-Ukraine Cultural Association, which really enriches our entire district. Our council continues to do excellent work supporting refugees from Afghanistan and elsewhere and linking together with the amazing network of community organisations also supporting refugees. And I hope that with local government reorganisation, we keep sight of this very, very important issue.
Thank you, Councillor Cooper. I think there's a question from Councillor Bolton, is that right?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, in the local plan, because it doesn't give sort of priority as to what sort of comes first, is it still the case that decarbonisation of homes across the district and energy efficiency trumps utility scale energy investment? Thank you.
I don't, I'm not entirely sure what you're referring to in this particular case. I mean, the objective of retrofitting homes, again, is one that may become more complicated since the Mayor appears to have some funding responsibilities in this particular area, remains a big priority for this authority. I think in terms of utility scale energy production at large scale across the district, the primary mechanism we've laid out is a local area energy plan. I think it's more about ensuring that we have the right energy infrastructure taken as a whole across the district and external investment driving that energy production as needed in order to be part of that plan than it is some kind of call upon the council's resources in order to achieve those outcomes. Certainly in the context of what we're doing for our own housing stock, the retrofit and the energy improvement of our own housing, our own housing stock, remains an absolute priority within the housing revenue account. And we don't see it as a trade-off. I mean, it makes the homes use less energy, have lower bills, be more comfortable to live in. When you get it right in terms of retrofit, you're improving the quality of the home as well as cutting carbon. So I don't think I would, I don't, I don't see a conflict between the two, and I don't see a resource conflict between the two, at least as laid out in this particular plan.
Right, are there any more questions? Councillor Lee, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, if I may, I'm looking at listening and learning, and I'm looking at community governance review to ensure a strong network of parish and town councils across the entire district capable of operating in any new local government structures. So can I ask, is that one of the higher priorities in the Council Plan and how might that be focused on? Thank you.
I think it's a very good question, and it was put in there because we could see the prospect of local government reorganisation, and we'll talk about the scale of that later on. You know, if we take at face value what the government has said about the scale of potential unitaries in the future, we are looking at situations of where you could easily have a single unitary council with around 200 parish councils to deal with. And also, and in the case of Winchester, a large unparished area in the middle, which is the city. So one of the questions that we need to answer, particularly when we have more clarity on what exactly the government is proposing for local government reorganisation, is whether that structure is appropriate going into the future. I do think this is one where we will take a lead from the parishes, from the representatives of the unparished area on the town forum, and from the ward members that reflect particular areas and what they think is appropriate. And it's also one where I think we will benefit, and I think our intention is to ask Halk, which is the Hampshire Association of Local Councils, for if they are able to get information from other areas that have been through this process, such as Wiltshire and Somerset, to see if there are lessons that can be useful for parishes and for us as the responsible authority for the configuration of parishes in our area as we're looking to the future. So yes, I think this is an important... So yes, I think this is an important question. I think if you're in a situation where you have a unitary that covers more than 500,000 people, then it is a very reasonable thing for us to say that we want to have a proper look at what the next tier down is on that, to make sure that local communities, towns, villages, and our city all have an adequate voice and an institution to stand up for them in this brave, potential brave new world of local government.
Right, thank you. Are there any more questions? Shall we go on to debate then? Councillor Scott, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. City council moving forward needs a clear plan for the next five years, and I believe the headlines go some way to achieve some of the issues that we still need to achieve as a council and for our communities in the district. The leader mentioned the difference between residents in Stanwell's lives over lives of residents in Forthland. The deprivation figures still don't stack in parts of Stanwell very well, in low income jobs, low health indicators, and not many people going on to further education, et cetera, et cetera. This plan will have a sense of us still trying to establish, build and community, a sense of place, and that's why we need this plan moving forward. I sometimes really, it grates me now when I hear the term affordability, affordable houses. We need to get the term back to social housing. Social housing, social housing is where I sit in as a tenant and live with a roof over my head, and my landlord is the city council. And I'm so proud to be a social tenant, not an affordable tenant, because quite often the affordable test is just not affordable for those who are in affordable properties. They really, really, really sometimes cherish the fact that sometimes the social element rents is better and, and much more affordable than affordable rents. We need to challenge, we need to get over that challenge moving forward in the next five years of trying to get back to the original concept of social housing again and get rid of this horrible term affordable. We need to challenge the developers who don't pay towards the affordable social cost because of always their viability tests. And how many times I've sat in six years of planning, but I haven't done for a few years now, that it used to really grate me when the developer said, oh, we can't afford the affordable cost because of our viability test. And then they go and sell their units, a million, million and a half pounds in Chibolton Avenue, and stuff like that, but they couldn't meet the viability test. So hopefully, this plan and this sense of moving forward as a council, irrespective of what the, the big authority will be, that we still need to, to voice what our communities need, and this, this plan is needed for us as a council to move forward. We need to see eradication of food banks. I've still got a food bank in Stanwell, there's a food bank in, in Winall. We need to see the eradication of food banks in, in parts of our district. We need to get a better feel of why people are still using drugs and the outcome of that, the antisocialness of needles being around some elements of our communities. We need to see why our young people have lack of services and see, to see if we can challenge that, even if it's the bigger unit really take over in a few years' time. We need to have that challenge for our young people, because services have been depleted. Youth groups and all the sort of stuff that young people used to attend in the 90s are completely a distant landscape for our young people, and then you wonder why they're not achieving. A lack of community facilities is something we need to relook and aspire by a plan moving forward, to try and rebuild some facilities in our communities. Again, it's a cost, but we need to recognise that some communities are depleted of community facilities. And adult education classes, it used to be, element in Stanwell, and family budgeting and cooking on a budget for families, all used to be things that used to be good factors in communities crying out for help and support. A plan is needed for the council, and I think this, these headlines and these themes fit within how I feel as a councillor, we are moving forward and we need, but there's lots more to do, and we need to have a sense of our residents feeling a sense of place and belonging in our district and the district that we all represent. And I think it's great to have a plan that we can work off, but this is not just the end of it, just in a document form, we need to see that perform into an action of seeing things brought forward for our, our residents, especially in the deprived areas in our district. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Scott. Councillor Wallace, please.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank councillor Scott for that excellent speech, I think raising a lot of really, really important points. The council plan, it's, you know, there's very little to disagree with. The, the words there, I think largely we'd all agree with the words and the intent of what we're trying to do, but, but I would like, I think it is important to, following up on what councillor Scott has said, to, to kind of make sure that we're, we're being honest with ourselves and with our residents about what we've achieved and where we're going. We've achieved some, the council's achieved some good things over the past few years, but there are still a lot of challenges out there. On, just, on, on retrofitting homes, we had a slow start, there was a slow start, it has picked up. There were more homes, more, more retrofit was performed last year, but there's a hell of a long way to go. We've got many thousands of houses in the district, and there's an awful lot of work to be done to get them all up to the standard that they need to be. Similarly, on assets, we have, River Park Leshy Tenter springs to mind as one where things haven't moved as fast as, as I know the council would like to have seen, anybody would like to have seen. So these opportunities to move, we'd like to see those, that move faster. Similarly, on some of the developments, central Winchester regeneration and up at the railway station, these projects have been going on for an awfully long time, and progress in the last few years has been slow for lots of, sometimes for good reason. And we, it would be good to see these projects move at, move at pace. And finally, obviously, on, on the green stuff, we've, I mean, we've already talked about, the council's made some good progress on reducing carbon emissions, but it was disappointing, and it's disappointing to hear again today, the leader called out the same statement that, that the council's reduced carbon emissions by 96%, because that is, it is misleading, it's clearly misleading. The, 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 the council set itself a target to reduce their own carbon emissions, scope one, two, and three carbon emissions to net zero by 2024. It, it's made some good progress, and we're, we're on the path to getting there, but we're nowhere near complete yet. Unfortunately, the administration made the decision to, to, to cut out scope three at the 11th hour, and, and so declared that we're at 96%. If you kept scope three in, which has always been the data that's been presented at audit, every, every, every quarter, we have a, we have a, we have an audit meeting where we, where we go through the data and look at it, and every time it's there. And yet, even in the last meeting, if you look at the last scrutiny meeting, we're still looking at scope one, two, and three emissions. And yet, we've decided to cut it out at the 11th hour and say, right, actually, scope three is no longer important. Now, this, this might seem like a technical detail, but it is important that we, that we're honest about our progress, honest about where we are, both with ourselves and with our residents. We are making progress, there is some good things that have been done, but there's a long way to go yet. And it's important that we're clear, that we're on a journey, and that we're, we're making the steps, but we're not there yet, and there's a long way to go. So I do welcome this plan, I will be supporting this plan, but I hope we will, we will work together to really make, and could make more progress over the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wallace. Councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm grateful to the leader for spending an hour with, with me to discuss the draft local council plan in the autumn last year. But I didn't want him to be taken by surprise when later this evening I vote against the adoption of this plan. I know he'd be disappointed, and I didn't want him to, to feel bad or uninformed, so I felt I had to explain why. I have always been impressed by councillor Scott as a ward councillor. He understands the problems his neighbours face, and he expressed them well tonight, and I'm pleased that he feels that the plan reflects what he wants to have done in his ward. Unfortunately, that is not the case for me. We have in, in Wonsley and Mitchell Dever, significant areas of deprivation, and some may think that's a surprise, but one of our larger settlements has 25% of people living there, living in social and affordable housing, mostly on benefits. We have a significant area in that settlement, which depend on the food bank in that village, and need extra support. And the only mention they get in this local plan is it's a site for new houses, mostly market houses, which are going to do nothing for their amenities, do nothing for their future, their employment, do nothing for their transport needs. And it's really important that the two thirds of our residents in this district who live outside the city are properly covered and supported by this council plan, and I do not believe they are. There is no protection for the character of our rural areas, our market towns and our villages, to make sure that we have a properly protected countryside. Instead, the council plan, through the local plan, intends to build on most of it, that we want to make sure that there are amenities in the rural areas. I do not see any significant investment planned within this council plan for rural areas, and it is essential for our, to meet the climate emergency, that we reduce the amount of travel, that people in rural areas, two thirds of our residents living there, that reduce their travel to where they need to go, to shops, to amenities, to jobs. And we need to see investment to encourage people to stay at home, stay near to home, to do their jobs, to do their shopping, and not have to travel into the large, centralised, edge-of-town shopping centres that we can see being developed around us. So I'm afraid I cannot support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Godfrey. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Much has been said about the uncertainty that surrounds this council and obviously others throughout Hampshire, and some of you might think it's strange what, that we are producing a new council plan in the wake of that uncertainty, but I believe that it is because of that uncertainty that it is absolutely vital that we set out what we, the plans in which we set out in this council plan, our vision for, for whatever really, whatever happens in these uncertain times. I particularly welcome our renewed commitment to our overarching theme for all our priorities of going greener and faster, and with the help, dedication, and support of staff, we have made terrific progress on carbon reduction across the council, and we now need to turn our attention to achieving our goal for the district, being carbon neutral by 2030. I would just like to say a few words about the thriving places section, where we are setting out ambitious plans for businesses within our district. We want to see strong, sustainable growth with more young people living and working in our district, retaining some of that homegrown talent. We want to ensure that our high streets in our market towns, as well as within our city, remain vibrant and have good footfall with lower vacancy rates. We have produced our Green Economic Development Strategy, which has a clear vision and a new action plan, which is now in place to keep us on track, and sets out commitments to, for example, deliver a digital growth factory. And I'm delighted to say that some of these we are already doing. We have been fortunate to have received shared prosperity funding over the past three years, and I'm very grateful to our small local economy team that they have been so diligent in getting this money through the door on so many worthwhile projects, and the economy and housing team will be having an update, a full update, on where the money has been spent at its next meeting. This year, we have ploughed a lot of that into upskilling our workforce. The skills programmes we are currently running, digital skills to upskill our residents who need help entering the digital world, and enhance their skills to be able to improve job opportunities. Our business growth factory, where businesses can access help and advice on finance, marketing, and other elements, excuse me, that make running businesses such a challenge. And finally, our retrofit 101, which is a tailor-made course designed to help builders develop their skills in this area, and helping our residents therefore to go greener faster. And a word about culture. Communities do not thrive without culture, and I am very proud of the fact that at a time when many councils are cutting funding from cultural projects, we have produced, together with our partners, a cultural strategy. During that process, we formed a really strong bond with the many organisations who took, who took part, and those organisations were from the educational institutions on our doorstep, cultural organisations and groups, businesses, and even the support of the Arts Council. And collectively, we all took ownership of that strategy. And this collaboration and strong sense of ownership means that we are all willing it to succeed, and it is more likely to do so with such a strong partnership. So this administration really recognises the value of culture and the important role it plays in our community. We also recognise that our rich history and unique culture is one of the reasons why visitors are drawn to our market towns and cities, and city. So it is absolutely vital that we build on this unique cultural heritage and natural environment assets that we have across our district. So in spite of all the uncertainty around, and for all the reasons I have outlined, and for our residents and our communities, our businesses, and our culture, it is really important that we agree this council plan and give it all the support we can. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson. I think councillor Horrell, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you. The scope of what we have before us this evening in the council plan is certainly extensive, and I think, as councillor Wallace has indicated, a sense of realism about our achievements to date and our aspirations is important. The wheels are very much spinning on many of our major projects, nothing has very much happened visibly for years. Nothing has very much happened visibly for years and I know residents are keen to see progress. Importantly for me, we've pulled up some of the stops on building our own council houses due to costs primarily. We've reverted to buying, which is adding to the stock clearly, but we're taking that responsibility of those affordable house allocations from developers such as in Whitley. So we're actually not adding to the overall number of homes. And I believe in some cases, we're actually putting homes into urban areas and where we need some in the smaller villages to maintain our communities, we haven't been able to support those. I hope this plan gives us the flexibility to reconsider that and to focus on this important area that this council has been very committed to over time. We're very proud of trying to be efficient and effective, but I wonder how we'll deal with the fact that the government is saying that they'll punish councils for keeping council tax low under their new rules. I wonder too, when we're saying that we're thinking about how well we're listening and learning, will we react when the minister overseeing local government reorganisation supports the doing away with thousands of local councillors? All of us who take pride in actually trying to represent our very important residents across our very diverse district. And I thank the leader for answering my question earlier about the resident survey. But the sadness is, you're the only one in your cabinet who actually know that data. The rest of us don't know whether that's really what the residents have said, except for your assurances. So this plan brings a lot to the table. I'm not sure it would be our plan if we were doing it. And I think the moving parts around us indicate some of the things we aspire to are simply not thought positively by the current government. So, Mr Mayor, this, this plan leaves a number of questions, I think, for all of us. And if we're true and honest to our residents, we need to take a more realistic approach to what we actually can achieve in the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Horrell.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. It's really good to know that 90% of residents supported the five priorities in the previous plan. So these have been brought forward with a renewed focus in this plan too. But there is a subtle difference this time in life, the fact that we are now clear of the pandemic and we have some successes and achievements with this council in the first five years behind us. We're wanting in this plan to secure energy-efficient, modern homes right across the district that public can afford to live in, in the heart of our new communities and in our rural areas. We're working to address air quality. There just isn't a safe level of air pollution and we know that we must address this. The local plan's waiting, waiting inspection, we just got on with it, to make sure that we were a developer-led plan, not, not a developer-led plan, but a council-led plan. People working in our area should be able to live in a home and in, live in our home area and work in the same area too. I agree, councillor James, it's, it's really important. And we've been improving our recycling annually. The economy is well supported with training and advice and grants. And I know that I've actually met many older people who've health, healthily taken to the IT training with gusto. And we are so close to our target of reducing our carbon by 2024. It was really useful to hear comments and suggestions from scrutiny and policy committees too. Most of the cabinet attended those and listened very acutely. Council plan, local plan, something that's sometimes confused by the public, but I'm sure it's not confused by all of you. But how does the local plan fit into this council plan? In fact, it fits in with every part. We asked residents' opinions and residents said that they wanted sustainable developments best attached to existing ones, not new ones. So additional residents to those rural areas will bring a new perspective to the community whilst choosing to live there because of their unique character and facilities. They like the way of life there, that they see there and it's a really sustainable way to welcome them too. It's the local plan's job to deliver this. But it's not just about the built environment, our green and blue spaces are important too. But we have to find cost-appropriate ways to conserve and enhance the ecology whilst supporting wellbeing of us humans too. Access to open space near your home is vital to wellbeing. Improved flood and sewage management is part of living well too. We've addressed this with our water companies and Winchester City Council's own private systems and with commercial organisations helping too. The statement, we're always right, is not necessarily the right approach. We will not be ashamed to learn from our mistakes and from the expertise of others. Good homes enable us to live healthy lives. Our air quality strategy includes a spotlight on internal quality, brought into our lives by AWAB and by Ella's death caused by the air we breathe in the streets around our homes, schools and workplaces. Ella's and AWAB's deaths give us renewed strength to build and maintain good homes for families and children. Our air quality strategy has influenced not only in our district, but in our region. We're proud to be a member of Clean Air South, a founder member. Winchester City Council has an officer board member working with Southampton University and the public health and the private sector to tackle air quality in our region. The ethos in this council is a learning culture. We commit to work harder to listen to. I was pleased to see apprenticeships and training posts advertised only recently at this council. We as councillors are learning too, as our new communities bring a younger, more diverse culture whose horizons may be worldwide. Our own district boundaries matter to us as a council, but not to the public who live in it. We'll always protect the integrity of Winchester district, but actively work with our neighbours. We're all just serving the inhabitants, workers and the natural world after all. So being effective and efficient is particularly important as we emerge from Covid and into a period of government change. The public will expect good service from Winchester City Council, even if it feels like the sands are shifting underneath us. If we get it wrong, we have to say so and learn from the experience. This council plan is essential to keep us all on track. If we keep our focus on the public's experience of the local council, then this local plan, this council plan will have done its job.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Becker, please.
Thank you, Mr, is that working? Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm really proud to support this plan. It is a clear demonstration of our values and our aspirations for our wonderful district. This is our line in the sand for any future reorganisation and provides a strong platform on which we can build. The change from living well to healthy communities is also very welcome. That change highlights the importance that this council is putting on health, both of people and the communities that they live in, be they urban communities or rural communities. It places that importance both in terms of the physical aspects of community and the social aspects of community. As councillor Scott alluded to, the differences in life expectancies between wards within the same town with people living a mile apart is heartbreaking. So while we're already putting significant effort into addressing these issues, this will continue to be a significant focus for this council, through example, through the new community action programmes and sports provision strategy. And this plan brings that work to the fore. Similarly, the change to recognise communities is intended to demonstrate the wonderful variety of places in which people live in this district, towns, villages, hamlets, farms, you name it, we are proud of those communities and we represent everyone who lives in those communities. The move from listening better to listening and learning is also welcome. It demonstrates a commitment to not only hearing from residents, but taking into account the lessons that we learn from them. We're constantly seeking to improve how we do things, both across the council and our communities. As an administration, we don't sit still, we are always looking forward, seeing what we can do better, actioning those things that we see so we do do better. And this plan recognises that constant eye on the horizon and for a better future for our residents, whether that is in, within Winchester City Council as we currently stand or within a different, larger organisation that looks to the future and provides that
Thank you, councillor Becker. Councillor Murphy, please.
Thank you. And I want to start first by thanking officers and the team for the work that they do on digital inclusion across the district. I attended the digital drop-in session at King Harold Court in St Michael yesterday and it's fantastic to see the work that they are doing to try and tackle the problems of people feeling excluded and unable to deal in an increasingly digital world. So I'm particularly pleased that within the plan, we have our digital strategy and action plan. I think it is very much the unseen, unloved element in the, in the background, but it is so important for our residents that we get that right and we continue to improve, but also that we include them. What we don't want to do is to add to our list so, so carefully set out and thought, and set out by councillor Scott, to add a digital exclusion to that. So I think it is very important that we continue that work within the plan that has been set out to bring all of our residents with us in a digital world.
Councillor Murphy. Right, any more for the debate? I think we've covered it fairly well. Councillor Lerni, would you like to speak, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'd like to thank all the members who have spoken so well this evening. Although clouded by the prospect of local government reorganisation, it remains essential that we have an updated statement of our aspirations for the district, not only to guide us in the actions we take over the next few years as Winchester City Council, but in setting out what is important to our residents going forward. As the future becomes clearer, it is inevitable that underlying service plans will need to be adjusted. We are likely to find ourselves working with a strategic authority rather than the county council on transport and nature recovery. Some long-term plans may need to be reconsidered and there will be considerable pressures on the time of many of our officers as we plan for change. This does not change our ambitions for our district, so eloquently set out by the leader and indeed councillor Scott. We retain greener faster as our overarching priority with the change of an increased focus on resilience to extreme climate events. 2024 has been the hottest ever recorded and globally the first to be over 1.5 degrees higher than the pre-industrial average. As California burns, it is clear that the world has not done enough to reduce the speed and severity of climate change and extreme events such as droughts, intense wind, heat waves and flooding will become increasingly common in Winchester district as elsewhere in the world. We have to continue our work to reduce carbon emissions alongside working to reverse the decline in nature and biodiversity, which is being made worse by the climate crisis, but need to do more to manage extreme events when they occur. While we may not have a full five years, key policies and plans such as the local plan, air quality strategy and the local area energy plan are already well underway and will continue into any new arrangements. The work of all of us councillors and officers goes on and I hope you will support the ambitions for our district as set out in this plan to guide that work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lerni. Councillor Todd, would you like to sum up, please?
Yes, thank you indeed. Thank you very much indeed, Mr Mayor, and thank you everybody who made speeches today and for raising important issues as we went around. There are a few clarifications that I would like to make before we finish and I, I may even persuade councillor Godfrey to change his mind. The first thing to say is that we are really serious on the issue of deprivation and support for, for struggling communities. And we are not just talking about it in the context of the city. The reason we talk about a targeted cost of living support programme, the reason we talk about community action programmes for our most deprived areas and communities, the reason we talk about district community facilities review, and we mean the whole district, it is that we are, as we shifted in the plan to talk about thriving places, we are thinking about every place across the district and how it works. We are protecting the countryside and we have done that within our local plan. And we are really serious about rural amenities. It's why we wrote the 20-minute living into the local plan and it's why we have 20-minute living and everybody living within 20 minutes of, on walking, cycling or wheeling of their home. So it's, it's why rural living is one of the reasons why we talk about broadband and gigabit coverage. The plan in front of you today literally talks about using local plan policies to support sustained and improved facilities in local centres that reduce the need for travel. And that is written very much with our rural communities in mind. We are absolutely committed, as far as we are able, through the planning process to ensure that our rural communities have the facilities, protect the facilities so that people can live good lives in those communities. And that where we're talking about healthy communities and tackling poverty and tackling deprivation, we absolutely recognise and respect that that is something that can happen in rural areas as well as urban ones. And the nature of that can be different in rural areas as well as urban ones. So I would like to reassure you that, that, that we are absolutely committed to the people you talked about in your ward, just as we are whether they live in Winchester or anywhere else in the entire district. I would also want to correct something that was said on the subject of homes in Whitley. And first of all, I make no apology at all for the fact that we will have council houses in one of the biggest communities where we know it's growing quickly, where we know people want to live and where we had none before. No apology at all. But I would like to correct an assumption that when we're buying houses, that automatically means that we're just taking out of the stock of affordable housing. And actually, Whitley is a really good example of where we didn't do that. Whitley is where we did so-called additionality, where houses that were going to be sold at market pricing have become council houses, council houses, not affordable housing, to build on the, the point that councillor Scott mentioned, council houses that would not have otherwise been council houses or affordable housing or with a housing association if we had not had that conversation and enabled those houses to come forward in Whitley. And actually, another example of where we bought houses, and it's absolutely vital in our cities to help rebalance some of the communities that have seen so-called student identification in the past, is where we are buying back former council homes on our councillor states and turning them back into family homes. And again, no apologies for that. That is something that we will continue to do where it's appropriate. I think my colleagues have laid out a really strong case as to why this plan is right for our district, how it builds on our achievements of the past and how it's right for us to set a vision for what we believe the representatives of the Winchester district is right for our district going into the future, irrespective of what local government boundaries might be, of what the organisation might be. I make no apology that today we're setting forward an ambitious programme for what this area can be like and what the role of local government can be in making it happen. It may be a rocky journey, it may not be straightforward, but I have no apology for setting forward an ambitious plan. And I would ask all members here this evening to please support it when we come to the
Thank you, councillor Todd. And I think that we have actually come to the point of a vote. So is the recommended minute of the cabinet as set out on the agenda and in the recommended minute agreed? All those in favour? Right, thank you. All those against? Right. And any members wishing to abstain? Right. Thank you, thank you. Right, the recommended minute of the cabinet is agreed. Let's go on now. Right, the next item of business. Right, the next item of business this evening is agenda item six, consideration and determination of the recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee held on the 28th of November 2024. Mr John, would you like to introduce, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Agenda item six is the recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee held on the 28th of November 2024 regarding the final report and pay policy statement 2025/26. And this is set out on your agenda and in the draft minute of the committee on page 43. Report AG142 refers, and this is also included in your agenda pack on pages 45 to 69. To conclude, councillor recommended to adopt the pay policy statement for the financial year 25/26. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr John. Can I please have a proposer for the recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee, please?
I'd like to propose it, thank you.
And do we have a second, please?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to second the item.
Thank you. Do you like to reserve your right to reply?
I would, Mr Mayor, yes.
Councillor Morris, if you'd like to introduce, please?
Okay, this is hopefully going to be a quicker item. This is to ask councillors to adopt the pay policy for the financial year 25/26, as discussed in the minute at the ANG Committee on the 28th of November. As you see from your public pack, which you've all read, the pay structure remuneration is based on national agreements on pay, the National Joint Council for Local Government Services, Joint Negotiation Council of Chief Officers and the Joint Negotiating Council of Chief Executives, with any remuneration packages above £100,000 subject to consideration by Cabinet and full council. Pay levels are also regularly benchmarked in comparison with other local authorities, the idea being that we remain a employer of preference, I think it is, which means we are at a competitive level with other councils and the public sector. What you're being asked to adopt does not present any sort of material change to the existing pay policy statement of previous years, and is in effect a continuation of the agreed and well-established policy. But as this is an annual process, this requires the approval of the council, so I hope we'll approve it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, are there any questions? Councillor Lee, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. First, I'd just like to say I agree the level of remuneration is a very important factor for both recruitment and retention of our staff, and that remuneration should be fair and equitable in accordance with the equality legislation. But on the subject of fairness and equitability, I did note recently a report that said that Winchester is one of the most unstable property price areas in the UK, with an average increase of 9.2%. So perhaps can I just ask, is there going to be any consideration in the future to our high-cost area allowance to help our council staff with high housing costs and to avoid the long commutes for some? I also like to take this opportunity to thank our staff for the good work they do. It's not all about money, but it's also about goodwill, which is very evident from our staff. I'd also like to recognise how difficult the near future is likely to be for our staff with the putative devolution and local government reorganisation, and I look forward to working with our staff and members as well on the local government reorganisation for the best outcomes for our residents and for our district and for our hard-working staff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Councillor Horall, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I think councillor Lee and I are on the same page. I'd like to ask the chairman of the committee to pass our thanks to the staff for their hard work over the last year, but importantly, to reassure them in this time when obviously there is quite a lot of uncertainty about devolution and local government reorganisation, and we shall need all of the support for our ongoing activities that are committed in the council plan alongside all of those things that we have to discuss in potential changes. So if the chair of the committee would be happy to do that, I'm sure this council would all agree. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, any questions?
If I can assist, Mr Mayor. Councillor Lee, you asked around an additional allowance due to a high-cost living area, something like that. We're part of the national scheme for our spinal column points, and I'm sure members will remember, maybe two or three years ago, we brought forward proposals, and indeed in recognising the high-cost living area, we have added an additional increment to our spinal column points. So we have, in the relatively recent past, made an adjustment to our pay scales. Our HR team constantly review our pay scales for comparison to other councils in similar areas to see that they are equitable. But of course, it is true that with the prevalence of hybrid working now, many colleagues do live further away and we don't, and some councils don't see them in the office. However, members, as you know, we operate a 50-50 hybrid scheme, so we ensure we maintain a positive culture within the council and that we promote team working and can support our staff by expecting everyone to be in at least 50% of their contracted hours. Our staffing vacancy rate is running at about 13%, which it has been for some time. However, as a member said this evening, we positively engage and try and offer apprentices at our most junior grade of jobs, and we actively make that decision. And we have indeed today seen some colleagues who joined us on a national graduate scheme who has received two promotions in the last three years and is now a senior planner with us. So we're very proud of the offer that we give to our staff, which wraps around not only salary but indeed opportunity and training. So to turn specifically to councillor Lee's question, there isn't a high-cost housing scheme, I think you mean the London allowance, but we do actively review the pay grades to ensure that we're competitive in our local market. Thank you.
Just with regards to lowest-paid employees, I do note that the council does have a living wage foundation status to pay at a higher rate than the lowest necessary wage to employees, which I think is very important given the high cost of living in the city and also some of the pressures that we've already discussed earlier about levels of inequality that still exist. However, I do notice that, and I wanted to ask the chief executive possibly, if they could comment on how we address that with people not directly in our employ and contractors as well, and if there's any measures as well where we, in effect, that we're not outsourcing the inequality.
Chief executive, can you answer that, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor, you raise an excellent point, and as part of our procurement processes, we require not only sustainability measures but living wage measures and promote local employment in the area. So I can't give you a guaranteed copper-bottom answer today, but in all of our contracts we do now require that living wage is paid. Thank you.
Right, shall we throw it open to debate now? Councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As always, delighted to welcome this updated version of the pay policy for this council, and will again welcome the council's confirmation that is committed to accreditation to the real living wage set by the Living Wage Foundation. This measure, which I introduced when I was in charge of finances some 12 years ago, 11 years ago, is, as I've said before, one of the proudest successes of my short career as a councillor. It is important that we set the standard for other employers across this district, and we are one of the very few councils in the South East of England that is accredited to the Living Wage Foundation scheme. Part of that accreditation, councillor Godfrey, does require that all external contracts do expect the same living wage to be set for all contractors' staff. And I do believe that this is being done for all of our contracts and has been done for at least eight years, which is excellent. It's very hard on the council, and I do hope that this challenging commitment we have made is adopted by any combined authority or other new authority which comes into existence, because I think we have to set the standard for Winchester and Hampshire. I am obviously proud of the fact that the previous government did bring up the national living wage at a faster rate than previously, so it's only now just 10% below the real living wage, but there is a gap that needs to be filled, and this council has committed to filling that gap for its lowest-paid workers, and we should support that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Godfrey. Right, councillor Chamberlain, do you wish to speak?
If I may, Mr Register, a short point, and it's just a note against councillor Lee's input. You mentioned a recent report. It's probably just to reassure councillors here tonight that during the November Audit and Governance Committee and during the questions on these items, we did as a committee ask question officers as to how this policy compares not just against the local demographic and population but also other similar authorities as well. So this was actually quite a central part of the questions that we were asking on that night, and as has already been alluded to, we were reassured by officers with the responses we received. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chamberlain. Councillor Morris, please, if you'd like to sum up?
Yeah, just in summary, I'd like to thank the comments made by councillors and to endorse councillor Horall's comments on the high esteem that we hold our officers and the high standard of their work. And I'm sure that I'm not alone that when the news came through that there would be a new unitary council coming in, I first thought that the top priority should be that the experience and expertise of our officers should be retained by any future organisation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Morris. Right, is the recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee as set out in the agenda and in the recommended minute agreed? Could I see a show of hands, please? All those in favour? Thank you. I don't think there are any abstentions either. Thank you, good. That recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee is now agreed. Right. The next item of business is agenda item seven, consideration of the, consideration and determination of the recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee held on the 28th of November 2024. Mr John, could you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Agenda item seven is the recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee held on the 28th of November 24 regarding complaints, the guidance and the process. This is set out on your agenda and in the draft minute of the committee on page 71. Report AG142 refers, and this is also included in your agenda pack on pages 73 to 184. To conclude, councillor recommended to adopt the arrangements for dealing with code of conduct complaints as set out in appendix two to report AG146, and that this is incorporated into the council's constitution. Please note, this is included in your agenda pack on pages 171 to 184. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr John. Could I have a proposer for the recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee, please?
I'd like to propose the minute, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morris. And can I have a second?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to second the item.
Thank you, councillor Chamberlain. You'd like to reserve your right to reply?
I would like to.
Right, okay, good. Councillor Morris, if you would like to introduce, please?
Another exciting item from the Audit and Governance. This is to ask council to adopt the arrangements for dealing with the code of conduct complaints as given in your public pack and to incorporate them into the council's constitution. This recommendation also includes the provision to advise all town and parish councils within the district of the guidance and arrangements to dealing with the code of conduct complaints. You recall that at our last meeting on the 6th of November, we all agreed to incorporate the new, the LGA model code of conduct for councillors, which have helpfully been included in the public pack as appendix one. But tonight, all you're actually being asked to do is to approve the arrangements given in appendix two, which is all the stuff on page 171 onwards, which sets out in detail the process for how any complaints will be dealt with, i.e. whether there'll be an investigation, how the investigation will proceed, how it will be resolved, whether it will be informally or whether it goes to a standards subcommittee hearing, and in turn, the process for that committee. It's all laid out there. There's a very useful flow chart on page 182 to remove any sort of scintilla of doubt, and that is what we are being asked tonight, to incorporate that into our constitution. Thank you.
Right, do we have any questions for councillor Morris? Right, I think we can go on to debate then. Councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to welcome this minute and mark my support for it. I'm grateful to officers who prepared the text in that it reflected the discussions of the Constitution Working Party very accurately, and I believe it is an important document for which we can base future decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Godfrey. Right, councillor Chamberlain, if you would like to speak, please?
Only to echo councillor Godfrey's comments on thanking the officers for their work and inputs on this front.
Councillor Morris, would you like to sum up, please?
There's not a great deal to add, but thank you.
Right, okay. Thank you. Is the recommended minute of the Audit and Governance Committee as set out in the agenda and in the recommended minute agreed? Can I have a show of hands, please? Right, jolly good. Right, the next item for business this evening is agenda item eight, which is information for the council. the council. And leader, can you give us an update regarding the English Devolution White Paper and the current position for Hampshire and the Isle of Wight and the implications for Winchester City Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to do so. And I would apologise to colleagues if some of what you hear reflects what you previously heard at the member briefing, but not everybody was there, and it's also information that the public haven't heard, and I think it's quite important. It's something that potentially has a very big impact on how services are delivered and how local people are represented across the Winchester district. The two items that are in the White Paper are often talked as if they're one thing, and they are really two quite separate things. So I am going to try and outline my understanding of where we stand and make a few comments as to what we might need to be thinking about as we go forward, both for devolution and for local government reorganisation. And I do see them as separate things, although they are interlinked. So the first thing to talk about is devolution. And this refers to the idea of the creation of what are called combined authorities, mayoral combined authorities, mayoral county combined authorities. And in shorthand, that effectively means that we're looking at having a mayor, a metropolitan, similar to metropolitan mayors in other parts of the country, for Hampshire, Portsmouth, Southampton and the Isle of Wight. It's a new position with new powers. Some have come, will be coming from the county council, some will be coming from central government, and a few will be coming from districts. And the kind of powers that this authority will have and that the mayor will execute on behalf of the authority relate to more local control of certain funding, which is currently central government controlled, and the possible introduction of a mayoral preset or effectively council tax for the mayor, leadership on local growth plans, a membership of the National Council of Nations and Regions, a leading role on transport and local infrastructure, leadership on skills and employment support, some housing and strategic planning powers, economic development, coordinating local energy planning and local nature recovery strategies, some health and wellbeing powers, and public safety powers, including incorporation of the role of police and crime commissioner. So what's being looked to be created from April 2026 is not a mayor on its own. So it is a so-called combined authority, where it will be the mayor and in the longer term, the leaders of the unitary authorities, sitting down and making decisions about the areas that I just talked about. Now, there will be a period in between the creation of the mayor and the creation of unitaries where the governance will be different, and I'll talk about that in a minute. It's important to say that this creation of mayors for metropolitan area, or for wider areas, it's laid out in the authorities, in the White Paper, that it should be for more than one and a half million people, is not a surprise. It was in the Labour Party's manifesto, and it was something that was being actively discussed in local government across the summer. And unusually, there is also local consensus on the shape of that authority, with Hampshire, Portsmouth, Southampton and the Isle of Wight, and the leaders of the districts, apart from one, all supporting an authority on that district, although we have also talked about leaving the door open to BCP to join at a later date if they decide they want to and their meeting is this evening. And as a result of discussions between leaders and a debate at Hampshire full council and a debate at the Isle of Wight full council, all of, and decisions at the Portsmouth cabinet, in fact cabinets for all four authorities, all the upper tier and unitary authorities wrote to the Secretary of State, asking to be part of the devolution priority programme on January the 10th. Now, as those of us who were there who declared an extremely lengthy dispensation earlier will know, Hampshire also asked for a delay of county council elections as part of that, a decision that I personally disagree with, and I know other county councillors here today, the ones here today did as well. So what's due to happen next on this new combined authority? This new mayor combined with the leaders of the councils? And the answer is, the bid has been submitted and we're expecting to hear from central government whether that bid has been accepted and the request to be on the devolution priority programme has been accepted towards the end of this month. If it is separately, they will make a decision about whether to delay this year's county council elections. So all that has happened so far is that the county council has made a request, that doesn't mean that the request will be granted, we don't know how that's going to work. But if they accept Hampshire on to the devolution priority programme, then the government has said that they will run a consultation on the proposals over the next couple of months, probably February and March, and then will make, following that consultation, the final decision, at which point all authorities led by the upper tier and unitary will be expected to work together to establish this new organisation, this new authority, in time for elections in May 2026. Some of us disagree with the current electoral system for mayors, but that is a matter for parliament and not something that we're able to influence locally. What does matter is what is the accountability system for those mayors? And actually, the hard bit in all of this, and the bit where the districts will need to take a strong line and work together effectively, is how to make sure that districts are adequately represented in the authority ahead of any unitary authorities being created. Some of the functions that we execute, some of the things we do are directly impacted by this new combined authority, most obviously strategic planning. And I strongly believe that it is right that districts are at the table, and some other combined authorities, county combined authorities have managed this, and that is probably something that I will be advocating as far as I am able to ensure is in place in the period between establishment of the mayoral combined authority in 2026 and any move to unitary councils, which won't be until 2028 at the earliest. And that's the particularly important thing. So that train is now rolling, it's underway, but there are unanswered questions that we will need to take a strong line in. And I can assure you that district leaders are working together, and we are all talking to each other, about how we make sure the district voice is represented. And we did agree on Friday that there will be regular monthly meetings of all the leaders in Hampshire, Portsmouth, Southampton and the Isle of Wight to resolve the issues that we might have as we go forward, and also talk about local government reorganisation. And for those that are interested, I was chosen as the chair of that particular group of leaders, so obviously, so that, I think, hopefully at least will give me, give us an opportunity to ensure that the issues we wish to see discussed are on the agenda, although obviously the wider issues will be a matter for all of us together to try and resolve. So that's the picture as far as devolution is concerned. The second area, which is much more thorny issue, is local government reorganisation, which was not in the Labour Party manifesto. And indeed, a lot of the discussions over the summer, because everybody was working off what was in the manifesto, were primarily about these combined authorities, where we were able to come to this consensus in Hampshire and a proposal has been put forward. Now, there was a moment at the end of October where the government's autumn budget came out, and we had a sense of what was potentially coming in terms of local government organisation. There was this reference to the government's intention to work, quote, "with councils to move to simpler structures that make sense for their local areas with efficiency savings from council reorganisation helping to meet the needs of local people." And that was it, that was all we had at the end of October. And so the White Paper, which was published on December the 16th, had quite an impact, it's safe to say. I don't know how your Christmas was, but mine involved moments when I thought I was meant to be on holiday, sitting in an airport, having a teens meeting with Nick Adams King, which wasn't quite what I'd expected to be doing, but anyway, the leader of Hampshire. So that hit, I have to say, the entire sector, particularly district councils, very hard, because the government in that has essentially laid out an objective to merge district councils into larger areas and into the county areas that cover them. And it set out an expectation that there would be an abolition of all two-tier areas across the country, creating new unitary councils with a population of 500,000 or more, although it does make allowance for potential exceptions, and on a really ambitious timing, with so-called potential reorganisation plans submitted in March, and in our case, new unitary proposals submitted in the autumn. And the likely timetable that's laid out is for shadow elections in 2027 and unitary councils in 2028. And just to quickly explain what that means, when you reorganise local government into new unitary councils, the people who are going to run the council are elected a year in advance, and are called the shadow authority, and they do things like decide what the council tax is going to be, adopt the constitution, appoint key staff, so that on a year later, when the authority comes into being on the 1st of April and the beginning of the tax year, everything is in place and the authority can begin to operate. To give you an idea of how big a bolt from the blue this was, there was an event held by the District Council Network in Parliament on November the 27th to celebrate 50 years of district councils, at which the minister spoke, and none of this was mentioned. So you can imagine quite how upset people were. And it's important to say that we still don't have details of the process. So we've been given these guidelines as outlined in the White Paper, but we haven't actually received the so-called, quote, "formal invitation" that is due to be sent to us as a district, or have any other districts, or, as they call them, small unitaries and failing unitaries that neighbour district areas. None of them, none of us know exactly what is prepared, proposed, and there are a lot of unknowns to deal with. So we don't know what the process is going to be, what constraints there are going to be on the process, what requirements there are going to be, what are we expected to deliver with these new proposals for local government organisations? And in particular, we don't know what criteria we need to hit, particularly if we want an authority of less than half a million people. So we don't quite know what are the rules of game at this stage. We don't know if the building blocks have to be existing authorities. So if you look at the 1974 reorganisation, for example, the Winchester district was created out of the Winchester Urban District Council, the Droxford Rural District Council, and the northern half of the Winchester Rural District Council. So Winchester Rural District Council used to have Netley and places like that in it, but, so they broke up the councils in order to create areas in 1974. We don't know what the expectation is on that, there have been rumours in both directions. And we also don't know how the public are going to have a voice in this, to put it mildly, an important question. So there are, at least from my own personal perspective, a lot of issues outstanding. First of all is that the residents of Hampshire and of the Winchester district have not had any say in this, and it's not clear how the expectation is that they be involved. Now, to be fair, we've been told that residents will be consulted on the mayoral proposals if they're going ahead in February and March, and it was something that was put in the general election manifesto and quite, you know, there were Labour MPs and quite a lot of Labour votes across Hampshire where people voted for him. But we don't know what's going to happen and how the consultation process is going to work on local government reorganisation. And I do think it's important that in the meantime, we take a role in this, and so I have asked officers if we can have a public webinar, thinking it's probably most appropriate for the size of our district, which is open to any member of the public in the district who's interested to come along or to join the meeting and be taken through something similar to the kind of briefing that we had for members last week. The second issue, which in Hampshire is a very major issue, is that the proposals, although the case was made in the budget on sort of financial and efficiency grounds, don't actually do enough to tackle the financial problems in local government. So as we know, due to the pressure of adult services, the combination of the cost increase in adult services, children's services, demand for send transport and the holding down of council tax, Hampshire is currently reporting a potential deficit of £182 million in the next financial year, and that deficit is due to increase over time. Now, they have actually today announced that they're going to ask for a special council tax increase of 15%, which will reduce that to some degree, but there's still a structural increase where the costs of adult social care, children's services and send are going up faster than the income for Hampshire, and that is true in many other places. And the case that's made for reorganisation actually comes back to a county council network, CCM is the abbreviation we tend to use, report that was commissioned from Price Waterhouse Coopers, and this is the figure that you may have heard, where people talk about £3 billion worth of savings, called evaluating the importance of scale and proposals for local government reorganisation. So 2.94 billion supposedly saving, and it's important to realise that that isn't enough to solve the financial problems in local government, because when you dig into it, it turns out that the 2.94 billion is over five years, and it's over 25 authorities. So it actually averages out at £24 million per authority, which when you have a deficit of £182 million, as we do in Hampshire, is not enough to solve the problem. And so one of the challenges of what comes next, and one of the open questions is what is the, how will this financial position be resolved? Because what we don't want is the creation of new unitary authorities that are immediately in a financial crisis, and we've seen that, for example, in Somerset, where all the districts have been merged into the county, it's now a Somerset unitary authority, they are cutting everything that moves, and they're still having to ask the government for help because the numbers don't add up. The third question, or the third problem that I'd suggest, is that the proposed minimum size for authorities is too big. So half a million is big. Now, the truth is, none of us quite know what half a million is and how many people that covers, but the simple way of thinking about it is that unless you include Southampton, you can't get to half a million with three districts, you need four. And four districts is a lot, you know, it is a large area. And there's also the issue that you need to make the boundaries work within Hampshire. So that may be a form of government, but I hesitate to call it local government. You know, we could easily have been looking at scenarios if this half million stays in place, where you're saying, well, you need New Forest and Test Valley and Winchester and East Hampshire as one authority. Now, that's definitely an authority, but whether it's a local authority, I think, is a bit of a question. Or, you know, I don't, I don't want to speculate in terms of what the combinations would be, but these, if we can't get movement on the half million, and I would stress that this is something that all authorities in Hampshire, and as far as I can tell, all parties in Hampshire all agree on, then we are going to be pushed into having very, very large authorities that are not local at all. very large authorities that are not local at all, large, remote and inevitably distant. The fourth issue is, I think, that my concern is that the whole process is too rushed. So to take, I'm going to use an example, and, you know, please don't take this the wrong way if you're come from that particular area. But if you were, if we were doing this properly, there are questions that we would need to think about. I mean, the obvious relation, one obvious question is, okay, if Portsmouth is changing and 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 other local authorities are moving into it, well, what do we do about Waterlooville? You know, in nineteen seventy four, Waterlooville was in Haven, and now it isn't, it's in Haven and Winchester. Now, if we had time to do this properly, or to take something that sits outside our own district, if we take, let's say, Chalmers Ford and Valley Park, and these are contiguous areas, if we're doing this properly, we would have a discussion about how those communities work, and surely we would want to be saying that they were in one authority. And my concern is that if we rush this and we don't solve the financial problems. And if we don't have a chance for local people and local parishes to express their views, because it may be that the parishes in question, you know, completely disagree with what I've said, and that's absolutely their prerogative, and the local people might as well, but we need a chance to hear those voices and to know that people have a chance to consider, you know, where they might want to be, what authority they might want to be a part of. There's another issue that I touched on in passing, which is this new combined authority. Now, it's possible that local government reorganisation falls into the too hard category, and we then have a long period of governance where, under under, with the current configuration of councils. And and I talked about strategic planning. And I don't think a governance form, and I don't think anybody's proposing this, but if we just took up a tier of authorities, you would have effectively, round the table, one vote for one and a half million people in Hampshire, one vote for two hundred and twenty thousand people in Portsmouth, one vote for two hundred and eighty thousand people in, two hundred and sixty thousand in Southampton, and one vote for a hundred and sixty five thousand people in the Isle of Wight. Now, there are more people in Basingstoke and Dean than there are in the Isle of Wight, and it just feels unbalanced, and it doesn't feel like the different needs of the different areas would be properly recognised in that governance. And other places such as Peterborough and Cambridgeshire have managed to put governance in place that includes districts, and that for me is definitely something, as I talked about earlier, we need to address. And the last point is, it it's a huge distraction. And actually, it's worse than that, as far as colleagues who, you know, the the officers of the council are concerned. It's it's more than a distraction, it's actually something that's very worrying and concerning as people are looking to the future. You know, the county has lots of important things to do, they have huge financial problems to solve, they have important programmes to deliver, they have vital services, children's services, you know, which are very high quality, and it's absolutely essential that they continue to be delivered with excellence. And throwing a huge re reorganisation at it isn't necessarily going to help with any of that. And similarly, we've just talked about our ambitions as far as Winchester is concerned. We've got regeneration projects, we've got ambitious plans for improving recycling, cutting carbon, all the other things we talked about in the council plan. And local government reorganisation isn't going to help with this, it's quite the opposite. I was actually working for a health charity and very closely with the NHS England and and the Department of Health and Social Care at the time of the Lansley reorganisations. And I can tell you, it it had a devastating impact. In terms of just people being able to do their jobs, it was a huge distraction. And it took, I think everybody would say, a year or two for people to get back in the flow, and it probably takes longer than that. And my worry is, this is Labour's equivalent. Whatever advantages it may have in theory, the process of tran transition will be a damaging and costly distraction. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to unitarisation per se, and I don't think we should necessarily take that as an approach. Because, let's face it, we know that the current system can be confusing and frustrating, even for those of us in it. And for those of you with a historical bent, the city council and its predecessors were, to most intents and purposes, unitaries for nearly seven hundred years, from the twelfth century until the foundation of county councils in eighteen ninety five. So by local standards, the two-tier system is quite a recent invention. And indeed, if you look at the history of the city council, it has at various times been responsible for fire, police, water, sewage, electricity, gas, primary schools, libraries and public health, in addition to its current responsibilities. And for most of its history, the the mayor was the chief magistrate and the city's courts were independent of county courts and and magistrates. So unitarisation is something that historically we've we've done for years, but rushing it, getting it, not getting it right, making it large and remote and distant from local communities is not the answer. But that's the situation we're in, and that's the way we're going to have to navigate through all of this. So I can't give you the answer as to what's going to happen next, because we are still waiting for some of those details from government. I can promise you that I will share details of what we hear from government as soon as I know more. And I can also promise you that I am absolutely intending that we all work together. I'll work with councillors right across the district to make sure that the interests of all communities are heard on this. So I may not be able to answer all the questions that I'm sure you're about to give me, but I'm happy to take them and I'm happy to hear any points that you might have to make on this topic.
Thank you very much, councillor Todd, for that useful summary. I've in the, there aren't any questions from the public, but there's several questions from councillors on this particular topic. And it would seem sensible to do those straight now, if you're all right with that, Martin, rather than having a break and going back. And hopefully, by the time these five questions from councillors are answered, it may reduce the need for other questions, because there'll be a bit more information. So if you're happy with that, I'd like to do that, please. So the first question for councillors is from councillor Wallace. So councillor Wallace, if you'd like to ask your question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Devolution and local government reorganisation will be very complicated. That has massive implications across all levels of local government, including local parish and town councils. To help with the transition process, please can you confirm that relevant ward councillors will be included in all communications, including meetings with town and parish councils where devolution and local government reorganisation matters are involved?
Councillor Todd, please.
Thank you very much indeed. Alongside city councillors, it is absolutely a priority to make sure that parish councillors, parish councils are fully informed throughout the devolution and local government reorganisation process. So to that end, we, as you, many of you will know, held a briefing for members on January the sixth, where we shared what we knew at that point in time. And we also included some initial information for parish councillors in a parish liaison meeting on January the ninth. So our intention is that the next round of briefings will follow shortly after we receive the government's formal invitation to participate in local government reorganisation at the end of this month. And it's currently scheduled for February the third for city councillors and February the fifth for parish councils. Now, as part of the parish, the city councillor briefing on the third, it is also my intention that we share and discuss the content of the briefing for parish councillors two days later. Because the contents of the briefing will have been shared in advance, we don't currently plan to invite the thirty four city councillors who have parishes in their wards to join the forty eight parishes already invited to the meeting, because I don't think that would be productive. Although, of course, we will feed back to members on any input received. If there are any meetings directly with parishes, and and I'm very open for those parishes that are interested, that either myself, the deputy leader, other cabinet members will go to parishes if they wish to discuss local government reorganisation, obviously, we will make sure that ward members are concerned. And indeed, I'm interested in hearing ward members' views on parish configuration, not not just alongside the views of parishes, but also separate from the views of parishes, where they may differ. I can promise you that, just as we currently send, or at least, I've asked that we send that ward members get copies of Parish Connect email briefings, which will be the main mechanism that we use to communicate with parishes, we will continue to do that. So in general, yes, you will be copied in on all the communication to parishes. You will see what we are going to brief parishes on. I don't think it's that helpful to have an absolutely massive meeting. We we should make it a parish meeting when we hold it on the fifth. But in general, if we have any direct meetings with parishes as as cabinet members, then absolutely we will make sure that ward members are aware and invited and make sure that's a, make it clear that that's a condition of of our involvement.
Do you have a supplementary question, councillor Wallace?
Yeah, just just a quick one. So it's great that we're sharing the information beforehand. I I think the one, the one gap that I see is sometimes there's, sometimes there's really good questions asked at those meetings. And how do councillors get visibility of the questions that are asked at at meetings that you hold with the parish councils? Because we we see the briefing material beforehand that you're going to brief the parish council on, but we don't see the questions that come out. And often that question and answer session can be, can be some of the most valuable information. So how do how do we as councillors get to see that information? For example, are you are you planning to record those meetings with parishes, or or is there another way? Thank you. Very reasonable question, and it may be that there are also other parishes that want to see, that aren't able to attend for whatever reason and may want to see the meeting. So I will ask, I will ask the parishes that attend if they're happy for it to be recorded and made available to other parishes and to city councillors as well. And if that isn't possible, then I will, I will ensure that between myself and, oh.
Use AI.
No, we might use AI to summarise the meeting, but I'm not sure it'll give the right answer. But we will, if it requires us to make notes on the subject and forward those as well, we'll do that. But yes, we will absolutely make sure. I think it's a very good point. And again, I think it's helpful that we're all moving forward and looking at the issues of merge together.
Right, councillor Horrell, you have a question number seven on this topic.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, my question is, would the leader confirm if he is prepared to establish a regular cross-party committee to discuss the devolution and local government reorganisation proposals for our area and the agreed WCC responses? Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Horrell. I think my current thinking, or our current thinking, is that the plan is that these discussions are held with all councillors, and that any major decision, such as, for example, potential partners for merger, would be considered as a full council. The the reason I slightly think we need to take a kind of wide participatory approach as far as we're able, is that interests on these issues are not just party-based, but also need to reflect the different geographical interests and connections of councillors and their communities in different parts of the district. We also don't know whether Hampshire will be accepted onto the devolution priority programme, or what process the government expects us to follow for local government reorganisation. Now, it's possible that when we know this, that what I've just proposed won't make sense. But whatever happens, once we have those proposals, I will come back to members with a revised way forward to talk about how we can progress this and how every voice, the different opinions of different councillors around the the district are properly reflected in it.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Councillor Horrell, do you have a follow-up question?
Please, Mr Mayor. And as a party, we believe in devolution, but obviously led by local people and not just a central government dictat, which is, I think, what's hanging over us. But that reassurance about district representatives being able to participate would be really helpful to understand, because I know that there are some proposals on the table. You mentioned already talking to some about cathedral city unitaries. And I heard one of your team say, well, we're not going to do that. Well, actually, many of us don't actually know what all the detail of those proposals are for cathedral unitaries. I'm assuming not everyone in this room does, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. And actually, as councillors, we might want to understand that and see what the options are on the table that you might then be taking back into the room when you're having the discussions with the other leaders. So are we going to be able to have that level of participation at district councillor level when all those various iterations come forward, as inevitably they will over the coming weeks and months, to ensure that we are all completely informed and have the chance to voice our views as a as a council? Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I would stress that when it comes to the whole question of cathedral unitaries, or it is, it is something that is currently in the area of exploration, just to understand where different people are. What became clear in the early conversations that I had, and I'm not going to name the councils involved, because I don't think it's appropriate, is that actually the situation that different councils face is very, very different. Some cathedral cities are much bigger than we are, so they may have a similar population as a district, but it is just one place. And some of them face very, in a very different situation, where they're sort of, they have issues with the potential for county unitary plans, and where they have a historic issue of being confined by their boundaries. So in other words, that the, there are some cathedral cities, and I'm not going to get into which ones they are. We are one particular model, where we are a cathedral city sitting within a rural district. And it will be interesting for us to understand if there are other people in a similar situation to that. There are other models where the cathedral city is actually surrounded by urban areas, and it sits in the middle of a wider urban area, but it doesn't represent, you know, it doesn't cover that wider area. So some of the concerns in that particular area are quite different. And 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 there will be different criteria to look at. And obviously, there will also be occasions where other authorities want to have confid conversations in 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 confidence, and I, you know, there there will be a limit to what can be said in in public forum. I think, I think the other point, but, you know, I can absolutely see that where we might get into a situation where, for example, we were designing how we might want to engage with local residents, that a smaller group would be necessary to do that work. When we get to that point, I would be happy to ensure that there is a diverse representation within it. But at the moment, I don't see that we know that that's something that's going to be happening. But I would assure you that, you know, when we get anywhere near anything that resembles a formal proposal, or even when we're trying to understand how to construct such a proposal, that members, all members, will be involved and made aware of those discussions.
Right, thank you, Martin. The next question is question eight from councillor Miller, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. What reassurance has been given to the residents of Winchester District that neither devolution or LGR will cause delays in major projects such as Station Approach and Central Winchester?
Thank you very much indeed, it's a very good question. And actually, that is one thing that I can tell you, all cathedral cities I've spoken to, which is not a huge number of them, there are, all are worried about, for example, the impact that these changes may have on regeneration projects that we we may be working on. So I can't promise you that it will have no impact on our major projects, but I can promise you that we will do our absolute utmost to ensure that it doesn't delay them for as long as the city council is responsible for their implementation. As an example, coming back to, there was reference earlier to the the central Winchester regeneration, you know, we will be taking Development Delivery Plan to Cabinet on March the thirteenth, well ahead of both the implementation of the combined authority and submission of any reorganisation proposals. One of the interesting things about these changes and why we need to, you know, focus on what we want out of them, rather than just falling into being too negative, is that it does bring potentially opportunities as well, particularly a mayoral combined authority. If there's devolution of funding to support regeneration and housing delivery, that could actually be helpful to us, you know, to our projects. You know, to our projects where, at the moment, we may find it difficult to get attention from Homes England or wherever to provide the funding support that we would look for, particularly if we were trying to deliver a significant amount of affordable housing and social housing within our developments. And actually, one of the frustrations about Station Approach has been the difficulty of engaging with Network Rail. And one of the things where my immediate reaction was, this is interesting, was that, to quote the White Paper, mayors will have an opportunity for direct, greater direct control over railway stations. And that potentially could be very positive as far as Station Approach is concerned. And I would stress it's the mayoral side of things which is almost certainly happening as opposed to the local government reorganisational side of things, which I expressed concern about earlier. Similarly, particularly Station Approach and Central Winchester regeneration, if we got to the point of being in a unitary, it does actually allow really joined up decision-making on transport and development and housing in one place, which at the moment we don't have. And sometimes we do work positively and constructively with the county, but we are different authorities. And again, you know, there may be opportunities as well as threats to what we're doing. That said, if the unitary inherits Hampshire's financial problems, then I think we would be concerned that there would be more constraints on what might possibly be done for our regeneration projects. And there is one very particular issue that is a matter of concern, which is something for us to be mindful of, is that when local government reorganisation is agreed, there is normally a point in the process where controls are put on local authorities, which require new spending to be agreed by the Secretary of State. So we lose control over certain aspects of spending at a certain point in the unitarisation process. So this, if it happens in the wrong time, that could be a problem. But we're also aware that it's a problem that needs to be thought about. And I have asked officers that we work out what we can do to mitigate that risk as effectively as possible as part of our risk management programme ahead of any implementation.
Councillor Miller, do you have a supplementary?
No, I don't think it would be very fair to ask councillor Todd for any more information because he's doing his best to tell us what he knows. So thank you.
Thank you. Right, we now have a question, question number 10 from councillor Lee, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. My question refers to both devolution and the local government review, lessons learned, best practice and avoiding wasting public funds. So we know that the process to streamline services and reduce financial pressures, yet external audits of eight unitary councils created since 2019 show limited financial success and adoption of best practices from previous authorities. I think the first part is in a Grant Thornton audit report. This is particularly evident with the transfer of environmental climate policies into new combined authorities. So my question is, can council members be assured that our existing best practices and achievements will be identified early, getting carried forward into the new unitaries and the mayor-led strategic combined authority? And specifically, how will we address the concerns about Hampshire County Council's lack of clear progress data and comprehensive plans for achieving net zero, ensuring we avoid replicating the lowest benchmarks into these new organisations with a need for repeated work and wasted public resources? Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for that question. And actually, the report you cited sounds very interesting. And I'll send you a copy of the County Council Network Report, which, as somebody once said, you know, it's not a report to be cast aside lightly, it should be thrown with great force. But anyway, I absolutely share your concerns and have said so on the record in this place about the weakness and the inadequacies of Hampshire's approach to achieving net zero. But, and this is an important point here, the policies and procedures of any new unitary authority will ultimately be a matter for those authorities and the councillors that are elected to run them and not for current city, borough, district and county councillors. That's just the reality of the situation. And actually, living in a democratic country, that is as it should be. You know, the authority should be run by the people who are elected to run it. But I think there are things that we can be doing to carry over and actually make sure that we capture what we think is important and try and reflect that in the establishment of a new authority, where we do still have influence in the process in that time before the authority stands up and goes live. And as an example, there are other things we can do to set standards going into the future. So for example, my understanding is that our local plan, if agreed, will remain the planning policy for the Winchester district area until any new authority has gone through the process of creating a new one. So ensuring, as we have, that we set very high standards in that plan will definitely make it harder for any successor authorities to weaken those policies later on. And other similar policies, such as our air quality management plan, the strategy, will also remain in place for as long a period and provide a baseline until such point as those new authorities create their own policies in those areas. And similarly, so that those are areas where policy can carry over. There are also areas where in practice, the practicalities of what we're doing will carry over. So for example, if we have put in place an ambitious, high-performing recycling system, which is absolutely our intent to do, then actually the cost of change of moving away from that should mean that it stays in place. And that would certainly be part of our thinking about how to move forward at pace for those kind of things. But ultimately, despite, yeah, and a good point made there, which is, you know, once you've retrofitted a house, we're not expecting the new authorities to go around and take out all the insulation because they disagree with it. So there are things that we can do to try and make a difference before any new unitary comes in place. So ultimately though, despite the enthusiasm that some parties have for cancelling or delaying elections, we do live in a democracy and it will be for those of us who want a more ambitious approach in any new authority that is created, to ensure that we or others of like mind are in a position to set the policies that our residents, our area and our planet so desperately need.
Do you have a supplementary councillor Lee?
The Devo and the local government reorganisation green light, can I ask that we try and establish a transparent system for identifying and tracking for the transition of our best practices and policies and the unfinished work to ensure we get optimal social, economic and environmental outcomes for these new organisations? And I appreciate it's up to the new organisations who will have this responsibility, but I believe it is really crucial to avoid unnecessary repetition and wasting public funds. Our residents will not thank us for inefficiencies or lost progress and waste of money. Thank you.
I have a lot of sympathy with what you're saying. And, you know, where we are able to influence the process to carry forward our policies and our approaches, I'm sure that we will try to do so. But I would stress that, for example, we will not be in a position to set KPIs for whatever new authority may be, because that will be the responsibility of the people elected to it. But we can, you know, we will, so if I separate the two things. So when it comes to the creation of the mayoralty, I think it's really important that, you know, we are at the table, the districts are at the table. We have a more recent mandate than the county council. The districts of Hampshire were elected in 2023 or 2024 and not 2021. And so that's another reason why I think it's really important that we're at the table when it comes to setting direction for the establishment of those new authorities. And I would stress that we are also involved in the work that goes ahead of those new authorities coming into being. Again, the policies will be set by the people elected to them, but we should certainly be trying to use our influence to embed good practice. And in practice, I think we need to have some trust in the good sense of the leaders and chief executives who will be looking at who does things well and what gets carried forward into any new organisation. There will be a lot to deal with, but I think it's a useful reminder that we should all be looking to say, we want these new organisations, as and when they come into existence, if they ever come into existence, to do a good job for our residents. And part of our engagement will be to try and ensure that that happens.
Right, now the last question of the councillors' questions is councillor Wallace, please.
Although, thank you, Mr Mayor, but I was going to say, I think we've answered that under the previous one.
Fine, okay. I think we've dealt with the list of councillors' questions that were submitted. Are there any questions perhaps you'd like to put to Martin on a particular topic, if he has enough stamina to answer? Right, okay. Thank you very much councillor Todd for that information. I think I have found it immensely useful and also the follow-up questions which have raised it. Perhaps we might now move on to the remaining councillor questions. And the first one is from councillor Lee, and it's not to do with devolution.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to say it's little to do with devolution. It's about the reduction of harm from plastics in Winchester. I'm going to try and truncate the preamble, keep it short. So plastic pollution is a global crisis with microplastics contaminating water, soil, air and even the human body. Plastics contribute to something like 850 million tonnes of carbon dioxide equivalent annually through production and incineration, a figure projected to rise dramatically. Plastics add to our clean-up costs, health risks and biodiversity losses. Despite Winchester's good progress with initiatives like improved waste management, new street market contracts and some procurement reforms, local plastic pollution persists with contributions to the climate change crisis and wider pollution. We can build on our existing efforts to create a stronger foundation, I believe, and legacy in the new organisations that might succeed us. So my question is, should the council expand its leadership in actions now to reduce the harm from plastics by adopting additional plastic reduction measures? And what additional steps can ensure Winchester leads by example to tackle this urgent crisis and the associated challenges? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lee. Plastics perform a key role in modern society, mouldable into any shape, long-lasting, non-corrosive, non-conducting and lightweight. They are the basis for our consumer and business electronics, an intrinsic part of our vehicles and help reduce food waste. We have a table covered in them here. We do however have to recognise the harms the production and the incorrect disposal of oil-based plastics have on our environment and the potential damage to human health. Many plastic products can be replaced by alternatives. And over recent years, we've seen a reduction in some uses as a result of national regulation. The plastic carrier bag levy and the ban on single-use plastics in catering are good examples. We anticipate that the introduction of the extended producer responsibility and deposit return schemes will encourage reduced levels of packaging and increased recycling. As a district council, we do not have many levers at our disposal to change the amount of plastic in our environment. Our new market contract discourages the use and sales of disposable plastic goods and our licensing policy demands the use of non-plastic alternatives to unbreakable glasses and containers. Through our grants programmes, we have supported repair cafes and the sale of loose fruit and vegetables and welcome approaches from community organisations with plastic and waste reduction projects. We have provided tetrapack recycling bins and pressed for improved recycling infrastructure, which would allow a greater range of food packaging to be recycled from the doorstep. We have opposed the closure of local household waste recycling centres. Increased recycling will not however get to the core of the problem. The need to reduce plastic use and production. We do need to look at promoting behaviour change, encouraging residents to keep products for longer and repairing rather than replacing where possible. At the end of product life, using correct disposal routes such as our doorstep small electrical collection and household waste recycling centres. And think about purchasing products made of alternative materials and with less or no packaging. The introduction of food waste recycling, of food waste collection will create an opportunity to promote increased recycling and reduce levels of contamination. And we will also look at available resources for public campaigning on waste reduction in this year.
Do you have a supplementary?
Just very quickly, yes, thank you councillor Lee for your reply. So can I ask for the Health and Environment Policy and the Housing and Economy Work programmes to take an early and urgent look at what more could be done? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very happy to work with the chairman and officers to look at how we can best do that.
Right, question two councillor Batho.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Dealing with household waste generated by residents of our district is a joint responsibility between Winchester City Council, who collect, and Hampshire County Council, who manage disposal. As part of the drive to be greener faster, the district would like to widen the range of waste that can be recycled. However, this is dependent on the facilities provided by the county council. A major impact on this is the lack of a decision on the building of a new material recycling facility, which has now been outstanding for years. Can the cabinet member for the climate emergency please explain what the impact of this dither and delay by the Conservative administration of Hampshire has had on the recycling aspirations of the district? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Batho. It is an unfortunate fact that Hampshire and the project Integra partnership have gone from a national leader in recycling to below average. The Alton Material Recycling Facility, the newer of two serving Hampshire, was opened two decades ago in 2005, at a time when a far narrower range of materials could be recycled. Although Hampshire County Council bought land at Eastleigh in 2018 for a new materials recycling facility and received planning permission in 2022, we still await the formal decision to move to construction. The impact of this delay is that this council will not meet the Environment Act 2021 requirements to collect recyclable plastics, such as pots, tubs and trays from the doorstep for recycling by April 2026. This is something which we could start doing tomorrow if appropriate infrastructure was in place. This reduces our recycling rate, it increases the contamination of the recycling we collect because residents believe they can recycle these products and it increases the amount of waste going for incineration. In addition, there is a potential financial penalty in a reduction in the income we will receive from extended producer responsibility funding going forward.
Right, thank you. Question three is councillor Brook, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm aware, just to precurse this, that I did ask for the assets meeting for the scrutiny follow-up. So that's where this came from and I had to delay it, so my apologies. So in advance of the follow-up scrutiny assets meeting, how many council assets are directly affected by the Central Winchester regeneration project? And what is the value of those, please?
Thank you very much indeed. So in March 2024, the city council assets within the Central Winchester regeneration area were valued on the council's general fund balance sheet at 6.3 million pounds. And those are in the draft accounts still subject to audit. These are existing use values and do not necessarily reflect the market value of those assets for regeneration purposes. There will be a table in the printed version of this answer, but the assets in question and the value they're allocated at are Coitbury House, which is listed at about 800,000 pounds, the bus station at 1.6 million, Friars Gate Park at 45,000, Kings Walk and Middlebrook Street, including the Antiques Market, Kings Walk and the former post office, Poundland and Iceland, about two and a half million, and Friars Gate Car Park, it's about 1.3 million. That adds up to 6.3. That adds up to 6.3 altogether.
Do you have a councillor Brook, do you have a supplementary question, please?
I do, if I may. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you to the leader for the previous answer. I just wanted to ask how many of those assets that we have in the centre are currently a drain on resources versus how many are making us money currently? Resources financially, apologies.
The, the main reason that they've been assigned value is that they are generating revenue. So the Friars Gate Park obviously doesn't generate any revenue. So that will be a small drain in terms of its management on, on council assets. But the bus station, the bus companies pay fees to use it. At the Antiques Mar, well, the Kings Walk, the former post office, Poundland and Icelandic people are paying rent to occupy those spaces. And the Friars Gate Car Park obviously generates revenue on its own account. So I think the answer is that, and we also have property guardians in Coitbury House, which I think maintains, keeps a low cost of operating that. But in general, most of the sites are currently generating a revenue, which more than covers the cost of operation.
Thank you councillor Todd. Question number five councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's now another six months through the five-year period agreed for the University of Southampton to develop and share their proposals for the River Park Leisure Centre site. It's also another six months since I last asked for the leader about the absence of any public indication of these proposals. When does the leader expect a clear milestone plan to be published leading to a submission of a planning application?
Thank you very much indeed councillor Godfrey. Six months ago, I promised that I would be meeting, meeting the university in September to discuss their future plans. The meeting actually took place slightly later than planned on October the 10th. Based on that meeting, we had hoped to be making some announcements about the university's investment plans and the plans for River Park fairly shortly. And we're continuing to work with the university for the earliest possible clarification of the way forward.
Supplementary?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Given that we've now less than two years before the end of this five-year period, this gives us very little time to see a planning application developed for that site. Do you really, do you think there's a realistic opportunity for this development to come forward in that timescale?
Anything is possible. And I'm, I am meeting officers in the next week or so to discuss options for how things proceed from here.
Right, the next question is question six from councillor Bolton, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In 2019, the administration declared a climate emergency and your stated aim was, and I quote, to commit to making the activities of Winchester City Council carbon neutral by 2024. At what point since then did the administration decide that of those activities now designated as scope one, two and three, only scope one and two would be included as WCC activities? Thank you.
For clarity, scope one emissions are direct emissions from sources an organisation owns or controls. Scope two is indirect emissions from the generation of purchased energy. Scopes one and two are under the council's control, while scope three emissions are all other indirect emissions that occur as part of a council activities. For example, staff travel to work and our contractors' emissions. While many councils only look at their directly controlled emissions, we have always reported on the three scopes in full in excess of Her Majesty's Government Environmental Reporting Guidelines and we will continue to do so. We have expanded what is included in scope three, so recent figures are not directly comparable with those in 2019. Unlike many councils, our figures are externally validated. I have been delighted to celebrate the success of the council in cutting those emissions we do directly control by an estimated 96%. We have also worked with our contractors to reduce their emissions with solar panels on their buildings, the use of green electricity and moving to low-carbon HVO fuel for our waste trucks and buses. Quoting directly from the Climate Emergency Declaration Cabinet Paper in 2019, what is clear is that achieving carbon neutral targets by 2024 and 2030 will be reliant on external factors outside the direct control of the council. We have had years of Conservative government with a lot of noise about carbon reduction, but failure to take the action needed to get us there. The opposition to land-based wind farms, the decimation of the home renewable energy industry and the transfer of funding from sustainable transport to roads are just a few example, examples of where government activity has actively damaged the ability for all of us to reduce carbon. I am proud of the carbon reduction this council has achieved in a difficult environment. Our intention to achieve full carbon neutrality has not changed and will continue alongside our work to decarbonise the district.
Do you have a supplementary councillor Bolton?
The recent announcement by the administration that they have all but met their target to reduce Winchester City Council's own carbon emissions to net zero is at best disingenuous. In fact, Winchester City Council's overall carbon footprint has barely changed from 1718 to 2324. To claim success by far the greatest risk, to claim success by far the greatest trick of the light would seem to be the reclassification of the 5,500 council-owned properties. By anyone's assessment, a substantial council asset has been counted in the district's 2030 net zero target rather than in the councils. To shed more light on the administration's claims of success, please would you confirm the value and nature of those assets included in the net zero target for WCC's own assets and those council assets allocated to the district net zero target? Thank you.
Councillor Bolton. We were clear that we were referring to those emissions directly under the council's control. We will have figures for the 2024/25 year, which will come forward and again be externally validated, which will give a lot more detail in how successful we've been around those scope three emission reductions. The council homes have, are not included within the council target principally because the fuel that's used is entirely out of our control and it certainly would not be included in any organisation's carbon footprint. The detail of what's in those scope three emissions, I can get for you. We have it in a great deal of detail, but it does cover pages and pages of assets and some of it we don't have full data for. Council homes are included in the 2030 target. We're working to help our tenants reduce their energy bills and will continue to do so. But obviously, issues like decarbonisation of the grid, those factors referred to which are outside this council's control will make a big difference in how possible it is to get near that 2030 target.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing the spreadsheet.
Go on to question nine councillor Warwick. I think she's given her apologies, hasn't she? Right. Yes, indeed. Councillor Lee. Councillor Levin, question 11, councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The main purpose of sharing IT services with Test Valley Council is to ensure resilient services for our council at an affordable cost. This should have meant that a recent flood in the council offices would have triggered an automated failover to prevent any significant loss of service. Why did this not happen and is there now any real benefit in sharing IT services with Test Valley?
Thank you councillor Godfrey. The shared IT service has been in operation for over 14 years and continues to provide resilience, economies of scale and expertise benefits to, to, to the Winchester City Council. The water leak that led to the loss of electricity supply to the West Wing clearly demonstrated the value of the partnership to enable swift recovery from a significant hardware problem. Some systems were not affected at all, including the website, Your Winchester app, My Council Services and all staff were enabled and equipped for remote working and could continue to use all our cloud applications, including email and Teams. All core services were restored within 12 hours with no data loss from major business systems. Within 24 hours, the disaster recovery site at Hyde Lodge was fully operational via connections to Test Valley Borough Council servers and our telephone system was back in operation using Test Valley lines initially. The remaining internet-based services, for example, the Planning Portal and mod.gov and network reliance systems such as printing took a little longer to restore, to return to full functionality due to reliance on third-party suppliers. The shared service enabled restoration of services far more quickly than would have been possible without it due to the ability to link into the Test Valley system and having a larger pool of highly skilled technical staff than we could justify ourselves. An independent assessment by external, by external cybersecurity consultants in 2022 cited the shared service as a major contributor to, to our resilience. Clearly, as with any incident of this nature, there are lessons to be learned. The installation of an extra line direct to the city offices has now provided extra backup that would enable the wireless network and telephony to be restored even more quickly in the event of a similar circumstance. And consideration has been given to better location of the servers to enable the use of a generator in the, in the event of a longer power outage. But in answer to your question, there is still considerable benefit to the shared IT service with Test Valley.
Do you have a supplementary, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm grateful for the response and, you know, you can thank me later for putting that service in place. I'll be grateful when the project report comes in to, to the Audit and Governance Committee to review the outage. But lessons learnt are clearly included for all the services, particularly those where there was a significant outage. So we understand how that can be avoided next time. Thank you so much.
I, I, I think, yes, internal audit will, will be looking through it and, and, and that will come back to audit in its usual, usual way.
Thank you councillor Cutler. I think we have now come to the end of members' questions. I have actually missed out agenda item nine, which is changes to committee memberships. Mr John, I think we formally deal with that.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Only to confirm that I've not been notified of any changes to committees, so thank you.
Right, members, I think in that case, that's conclude the formal business for the evening. So can the officers please end the broadcast? Thank you.